Certainly, Vice Chair Morrissey. Chair Rizales indicated he'd be absent today, as did Commissioner Balma. Commissioner Dodd's?
Present.
Vice Chair Morrissey?
Here.
Commissioner Custer?
Here.
And Commissioner Simons?
Here.
Please let the record show that four Commissioners are present. We have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any slips on matters not on the agenda?
Chairman, we do not.
If that's the case, then could I get a motion to approve the August 22 meeting minutes?
I will motion for approval of the minutes for August 22.
I'll second that.
Okay. Do we vote on that?
Vice Chair Morrissey, let the record show that the motion passes three oh with Commissioner Custer abstaining.
Okay, next item is, I see nothing on the consent calendar, nothing on transportation items, so we can go right into the public hearings. We have two public hearings items tonight. Item four is a consideration of a tentative parcel map development plan, conditional use permit to subdivide two parcels totaling 1.76 acres into four single-family residential lots with a designated remainder parcel. The four lots would each be developed with a two-story, single-family dwelling. The project site is located on the northeast corner of Ivy Road and Vista Way, within the Fire Mountain Neighborhood Planning Area. The site has a zoning classification of residential, single-family with an underlying general plan designation of single-family detached residential Ocean Ivy Estates 2245 Ivy Road subdivision, and the applicant is JP Engineering. So, that's what's the first item on the agenda, and if we could get disclosures. Commissioner Dodd?
Just the staff report.
Okay.
Staff report, and I've driven by the site.
Staff report, and I've driven by the site a million times.
Or less.
And same for me. So, with that, staff, could you make your presentation?
Of course. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Dane Thompson with the Planning Division. Sorry. I will be presenting item number four tonight, the Ocean Ivy Estates project. The project is located at the northeastern corner of Ivy Road and Vista Way. Ocean Ivy Estates is a request for four entitlements, a parcel map to subdivide two lots totaling almost two acres into four single-family residential lots with a designated remainder parcel, a development plan to construct four single-family homes, and conditional use permits for panhandle access and an increase from base density that does not exceed maximum potential density. The two existing parcels are shown here on the screen. The parcel map proposes to convert a portion of the vacant parcel shown in blue to the residential section shown in red and subdivide that into four single-family residential lots that range in about, range from about 10,000 to 11,000 square feet. The balance of the vacant parcel will be designated as a remainder parcel, which does not carry any development rights. The project proposes to build four single-family homes that are each two-story, three-bedroom units at just under 2,500 square feet. On this slide, you can see the architecture for the project. As you can see, there is a consistent theme, but it still includes substantial variation to avoid the monotony of cookie cutter tract homes. The project has been reviewed for compliance with all city codes, ordinances, and policies, including the subdivision ordinance, zoning ordinance, and the general plan. Staff believes the project is compatible with the surrounding Fire Mountain Neighborhood as the lot sizes in the project are comparable to the lots in the vicinity. The architecture would complement the eclectic nature of architectural styles in the neighborhood, and the lot configuration is fairly typical to the area. With that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission, by motion, confirm issuance of categorical exemption for SEQA guidelines, Article 19, Section 15, 332, infill development projects, and adopt Resolution Number 2022 P25, approving P21-1, D21-10, CUP 21-4, and CUP 22-17, with findings and conditions of approval attached herein. That concludes my presentation. The architect for the project, I believe, is, thank you, is in the audience. He's available for questions. I am also available for questions, and that wraps up my presentation. Thank you.
Thanks, Dane. Does anyone have any questions for Dane?
Yeah, I had one question. It was more about the remainder parcel. I'm just curious, what happens to that parcel?
So, Commissioner Simons, the remainder parcel was part of the map, but it wasn't mapped with development rights. If, the site is very constrained. It's basically a hillside. It's very, it has little depth to it, so it's really constrained in that sense. If somebody did try to request to develop that site, they would have to come into the city for a certificate of compliance where we would effectively review it and make sure it is, that the site would be doing all that it would have to do if it was part of this map. This is a parcel map for four lots.
Is responsible for it, and?
Sorry?
Somebody still owns it, and they're responsible for it. It just doesn't?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I was curious about. Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Would the applicant like to come up? So, you have 20 minutes, and you could take it all now, or half of it, and come back later? It's your choice.
My name is Jorge Palacios. I'm the engineer of work who applied for this parcel map. I have the owner and the architect here, but we're only here for any questions you may have.
Okay. Would you, so would you like to say anything about your project before we see if there's any comment from the public?
Well, we worked with the staffs in day one, and we made some changes according to the staff requests.
Okay.
And that's why we're here now, because the staff recommended approval, because we basically, we were guided by the ordinance, the grading ordinance, and also, we also talked to the engineering department about, about some of the conditions that they have for the project. When it's to wiring Ivy Road, which we agree with it, and basically, we're building a private driveway that connects the four lots. So, we're gonna have, we're gonna have CCNRs and an HOA part of the approval, because we have some open space, as you can see, the back is all the open space that we're gonna have to maintain. There is a landscape plan, I believe, that we submitted, that we're planning following. We're gonna leave all the 60 trees that are on the slope. That slope was created by the, by the main highway there, Vista Way, so, but we're not grading that. We're basically using the area that is disturbed already with the three or four homes that is there to build the new, the new homes. We had a community meeting, and I think they all liked the architecture, and so, I don't think they have any complaints about the design.
Whose responsibility will it be to maintain that remainder piece?
It'll be the HOA.
Okay. Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Pretty straightforward. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna give it to the other.
Thank you. Do we have, does anyone in the public have, have a request to speak?
Vice Chair Morrissey, no, we do not have any slips for this item.
Okay. Is there any discussion in the Planning Commission about the project? Would someone like to make a motion?
Sure. I'll move that we confirm issuance of a Class 32 categorical exemption for infill development for SEQA, and that we adopt the Planning Commission Resolution Number 2022 P25.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Dodd.
Vice Chair Morrissey, let the record show that the motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Okay, the next item is, item five. We had this, heard this at our last meeting of August 22. I'll just read this quickly. Consideration of a tentative map development plan, regular coastal permit, and density bonus to allow the construction of 146-unit apartment building with 131 market rate units and 15 affordable units at the very low income level pursuant to state density bonus law on a 2.67-acre site comprised of four vacant parcels. The project site is located at the terminus of Ditmar and Nevada Streets, south of Oceanside Boulevard, and immediately north of the NCTD Sprinter Rail Line, within the non-appellable area of the city's coastal zone. The site has a general plan, land use designation of coastal residential high density, and a zoning designation of medium-density residential R3. Located at the terminus of Ditmar and Nevada Streets, south of Oceanside Boulevard, Breeze Luxury Apartment Residence, and the applicant is Oceanside LP, and, thank you, sir. Your floor.
Vice Chair Morrissey, you might want to ask for disclosures?
Disclosures, yes. Thank you.
Staff report, and I've been by the area.
Yeah, I read the staff report, and been by the area numerous times.
Just staff report, last meeting?
Yep.
Yeah, what we got here?
I read the staff report, drove by the area, and watched the recording of the last meeting.
Thank you. Now, Rob.
Good evening, Vice Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. I'm Rob Demahowski, civil planner with the Planning Division, and here to present the Breeze Luxury Apartments. On August 22, your commission considered the Breeze apartment project, and after due consideration, the commission entertained a motion to approve the project. Ultimately, the motion failed by a two-three vote with one Commissioner absent. Concern cited by the commission included aesthetics, lack of articulation of the building, and compatibility with the surrounding community. Concerns were also raised by the Planning Commission and public about potential glare from solar panels. After the vote, Chair Rizales directed staff to review recording of the meeting and come back to the next meeting with a resolution for denial of the project. Subsequent to the meeting, the applicant contacted staff and informed us that they were planning on making revisions to the project in response to concern raised by the Planning Commission, as well as public testimony at the August 22 meeting. Since the Planning Commission did not formally vote to deny the project on August 22, and in light of project modifications made by the applicant, the commission may fully consider the revised project based, based on modifications by the applicant, and has the option to either approve the project or deny the project based on findings provided in one of the two attached resolutions to the, appended to the staff report. The project was also re-advertised in the newspaper, and notification was sent to the interested parties list, as well as any member of the public who provided comment during the August 22 meeting or prior. And as mentioned, the project's, the 2.67-acre project site is located off of Oceanside Boulevard at the southern terminus of Ditmar and Nevada Street, and is adjacent to the North County Transit Center Sprinter line. Surrounding uses include a mixture of multifamily, single-family homes, as well as a mobile home park to the south, and the project's located in the non-appellable area of the city's coastal zone. The project site has an approved entitlement that was previously approved as Breeze Town Homes, which entitled the construction of 34 townhomes, and that was approved by City Council on December 4 of 2019. It was initially approved by Planning Commission, appealed to council. As part of that application, a final initial study and mitigated negative declaration was adopted with the project, primarily addressing, included mitigation to reduce project impacts to a less significant level related to biological, cultural, and paleontological resources. The project application includes a request for a tentative map to allow merger of four parcels of record, a development plan to construct 146 units with associated improvements, a regular coastal permit for development in the coastal zone, and a density bonus application to allow the project to exceed the maximum potential density of 97 dwelling units by 50% in exchange for providing 15% or 15 units, of units for very low-income households. As part of this request, the density bonus includes waivers or reductions of multiple development standards, as outlined in the August 22 staff report. The applicant is not requesting any incentives or concessions as part of the density bonus application. As shown on the development plan, the proposed project would construct 146 apartment units with associated improvements, including a private driveway, maneuvering area, landscaping, recreational areas, including a dog park, retaining walls and fencing, and drainage facilities. Street improvements would include curb gutter and sidewalk along the project frontages on Ditmar, Nevada, and Oceanside Boulevard, with a parkway on Oceanside Boulevard. Access to the project site would be provided exclusively for residents by the driveway on Ditmar that leads to the motor court and the project parking structure. There is a cul-de-sac with emergency access only on Nevada Street, as well as on Oceanside Boulevard, and that'll be limited to exclusively emergency vehicles, no, no other service vehicles or resident ingress or regress. The project proposes 209, 259 parking spaces that would include 229 for the residents, as well as 30 visitor's parking spaces. 146 spaces would be provided for bike parking, and per density bonus, the, the project is eligible for reduced parking based on the proximity to transit, as well as the, the level of affordability. The proposed building itself would be six stories, 58 and a half feet tall to the top of the ceiling, the six-floor ceiling, and then 73 and a half feet to the top of the tower or elevator structure. And the building would include two subterranean parking structures, levels, a first floor with parking, as well as amenities, including a leasing office, laundry, and office space, et cetera. And then, there would be five floors of apartments and a rooftop deck with a pool lounge and outdoor barbeceria. As previously noted, the applicant is proposing multiple revisions to the project, including a revised landscape plan. As shown, in response to comments regarding the landscape plan's deficiencies, the applicant is proposing 11 additional trees, and the applicant has also redesigned the Oceanside Boulevard street frontage to provide a parkway where the sidewalk is non-contiguous, so the sidewalk will be buffered from the street by a landscape parkway with, with trees. And also shown on, on this exhibit, the applicant has revised the rooftop deck to expand the amenity area from, from 6,000 square feet to 8,875 square feet. For reference, here is the previous building elevation that was presented to the Planning Commission on August 22. You'll note the vertical solar panels and solar awnings, as well as the, the lack of articulation along the horizontal planes that was discussed by the, the commission. In response to concerns regarding building design, the applicant made several design revisions to the project, including the elevation has been divided into six distinguishable sections, two vertical tower elements add articulation, usable balconies, Juliet balconies, and openable glass walls have been added to the units to increase airflow and open space, and the vertical solar panels have been removed from the building, and also, the, the lower-level solar awnings have, have been removed and replaced with the, with the covered awnings. And the applicant has a detailed presentation, and we'll, we'll go into too much further detail on the design, so I will defer any future details to, to the applicant's presentation. And this is a view from, from the Nevada Street showing the, the opposite side of the building, which would mirror the south elevation on, on terms of design materials. Some of the key planning considerations regarding the project, the, the project was only required to provide 73 spaces based on being within half-mile of the Sprinter Station off of Oceanside Boulevard and Coast Highway, and the level of affordability for the very low income. And as proposed, the project would provide 259 spaces with 30 guest spaces out of those. And for the R3 district, the typical parking ratio for, depending on bedroom count, would be between 219 to 292 spaces for, that'd be a, a market rate project. The project would have a reduced building footprint from the original project. As proposed, the lot coverage would be 25.7% compared to the original 32.5%, while the building itself is, is much taller and a larger floor area, the revised plan would actually result in existing habitat being preserved, and there would, there would, and as well as in the vicinity. And as noted, an addendum to the Breeze Town Home Project mitigated negative declaration was prepared in accordance with SEQA guidelines, Section 15162 and 15164, which allows a project to use a previously approved M&amp;D if no substantial changes are proposed, which would require a revision of the M&amp;D resulting from new significant environmental impacts, and there is, or there is no new information of substantial importance that was not previously discussed. Staff finds that the proposed project would not result in new impacts or increased severity of those impacts previously identified. As documented in the August 22 Planning Commission staff report, staff maintains that the project meets the required findings and is consistent with applicable objectives, policies, and standards of the general plan, the local coastal program, the zoning ordinance, and the subdivision ordinance. In response to concerns documented in Planning Commission and public testimony, the applicant has made a good faith effort to enhance the visual quality of the project by enhancing architectural design and landscaping, eliminating potential glare from, from solar panels, and adding additional amenities for the residents. Furthermore, staff would like to reiterate that density bonus is a state mandate, and a developer who meets requirements of density bonus law is entitled to receive the maximum permitted density as a matter of right, as well as other benefits. A density bonus project is entitled to unlimited waivers of development standards or reduction that would physically preclude a project from being built unless there is substantial evidence provided by the local agency that granting of a waiver, among other findings, would have specific adverse impacts as identified in density bonus law. Staff is unable to recommend denial of any of the requested waivers necessary to develop the project. Based on staff's full analysis of the project, staff recommends that the Planning Commission, by motion, consider an addendum to the final initial study and mitigated negative declaration for the Breeze Town Home Project in accordance with Section 15162 and 15164 of the SEQA guidelines, and approve tentative map, development plan, regular coastal permit, and density bonus by adopting Planning Commission Resolution Number 2021 P23 with associated findings. And as for clarification, staff has prepared an alternative resolution for denial of the project based on the Planning Commission's direct, direction from the August 22 meeting, and to bring back a resolution for denial. And please note that the resolution was prepared based on testimony received during the meeting, as well as from the public record, and is not staff's recommendation. Should the Planning Commission wish to deny the project, a motion could be entertained to the, to deny the project by adopting Planning Commission Resolution Number 2021 P27, provided as attachment to of the staff report. This concludes my presentation, and I am available for any questions.
Thanks, Rob. Does anyone have any questions for Rob? Go ahead.
Here's, here's where I am on it. I mean, obviously, I was one of the people who voted in favor of the project, only because I felt like the impacts weren't significant enough to warrant the rejection of the addendum and force them to go back and do the SEQA. On every other point, this is how I recall it, on every other point where we talked about the density bonus stuff, there was agreement that you couldn't say no to the project. So, when I'm looking at the resolution that you guys prepared, based on the testimony and whatnot, it has a lot of stuff that's density bonus stuff. Where my recollection of the meeting was, and this is where I felt, was it was all focused on the SEQA. So, when, when we talk about this resolution, which I believe this project was considered, and I believe the commission voted, and the only action after that was a request from the chairman to ask you guys to prepare the resolution. So, I, I think it's a little disingenuous to the public to reconsider the project. That's how I feel about it. So, although I voted one way, that was my feeling at the time, I do feel that this panel considered it, voted on it, and the only issue was to bring the resolution forward. So, I think our only task here, this is my opinion, is to consider the resolution that you prepared in response to the chairman's request. That, that's where I stand on, on this, and the other, the other Commissioners can, can say what they think. And then, based on the resolution, which I would like to delve into a little bit more based on what we hear from other people when we start talking about that resolution, is in fact what should be in that resolution that we vote on. That's my two cents.
Kevin? Thank you.
I agree wholeheartedly with Commissioner Simons, as far as focusing on the resolution. Excuse me. There, I do want to hear from, more from, from, from our public. There were some considerations that we did speak about in the August 22 meeting concerning safety, long corridors, and we saw, we see that you're making some, some changes as far as with, with the trees, but I, I think that the focus is kind of shifted. We, we want to focus more basically on what resolutions you're bringing forward, and, and consider that, but I'd like to hear more from the public first.
I think what we should do is, if we can come back to that, why don't we let the applicant make his presentation, and, and then I think that's something that we can address with you, as far as, do we, do we recognize that it was voted against last meeting, and we're looking for this attachment to address those issues of why? Should we address that first and then address a new vote? I mean, I, that's in my head what I'm thinking.
So, Vice Chair Morrissey, the direction was from the chairman to bring back a, a resolution for denial, to formally deny the project. There's a motion that needs to be made to deny the project. Because that motion wasn't made, and we re-advertized the project, this is a new public hearing, and the Planning Commission has the ability to entertain- and the planning commission has the ability to entertain the revisions that have been made and the recommendation that's in front of you. You also have the alternative option, you have the option to just go right to the motion to deny it after you hear the testimony from the applicant and the public.
I think that's fair.
So I guess I have a question, and that is, so I wasn't here. I'd watched the whole video. It was denied at the previous meeting. So now, are we we're here to reconsider the project with its modifications? Is that not correct? Bottom line?
Commissioner Custer, that's correct.
Okay, that's what we're doing. The resolution and all is within the new the amendments that they've made, the changes they've made to the project.
So before you tonight is a revised application.
Yes.
That incorporates some changes to address the concerns heard from not only the planning commission but the public. You also have the ability to make a motion to deny the project, and there's a resolution available to you to adopt that would reflect that denial.
I guess that's really more to the point. We have a resolution to then to deny the project, which apparently is different from just denying the project. We approve a resolution to deny the project?
Or you can adopt a resolution to approve the project.
Or we can just deny the project.
The options lies with the planning commission tonight.
Okay.
Okay.
Good evening, Vice Chair Morrissey, members of the planning commission, Dan Nebomoff, the Lightfoot Planning Group, offices in Carlsbad. We appreciate being able to be back and from you tonight with revisions to the project as Rob had gone through. I'm going to show a little bit more detail in our presentation. I think it was apparent from the last meeting that the planning commission did agree this site was appropriate considering its location, the corridor, for higher density and for affordable housing density bonus type project. What its location is an infill site in the Oceanside Boulevard corridor proximity to transit and the fact that the site's designated for higher density residential uses on this site. Now, the challenge with the site was, as we discussed in the architecture, this is the original view, what we had proposed previously, which was a contemporary coastal architectural design. And Rob had shown you the revisions, and this is a view from further away. The applicant has made a good faith effort to provide meaningful architectural revisions to the project and site revisions, which include additional trees and landscaping. I think we have some exhibits that, you know, you weren't able to see last time that relate to the site and the layout of the site. That will help provide some more background detail for that. And our revisions are really centered on the building design and aesthetics and exterior amenity space, balcony and window design, and we have some more details on that, and the landscaping, as I'd mentioned. And this is a close-up view of the southeast-facing facade of the building. And again, as Rob mentioned, this now presents six, you know, distinguishable building sections that have, you know, some more significant horizontal and vertical articulation on these facades. There are balcony and window features worked into the upper level of the building. There's Juliet balcony features and newly designed openable window feature on just about all the windows in the building. We've also removed a number of the solar canopies on the facade of the building and provided two different colors, in blue and black, of the solar canopies. This provides a bit more horizontal articulation across the building. It's not just the monotonous kind of array of solar panels across the building. Building also now is organized with these tower features that help segregate sections of the building. And these also are popped out from the building approximately five feet and provide balcony space for each unit that is behind that feature. So that provides a, you know, significant vertical articulation in concert with the elevator towers that were on this end of the building, where we removed the vertical solar panels from those features and now replaced those areas with windows. As you see here, these are clear windows. And in fact, the elevator cars inside the building will have a clear glass wall in the back of the elevator, so if you're riding the elevator, you can see out these windows. Be an interesting feature for the building, also kind of a dynamic lighting feature at nighttime and evening for this. And again, in this close-up view, you can see additional landscaping that we've shown along the edge of the building as we discussed last time. This is a before and after view. I think it's important to show these two views together so you can clearly see the significance of the revisions that were made. Again, removing the vertical solar panels does make quite a bit of difference to the building. This is a much softer design, has a much very more varied roof line, especially with the mansard roofs that have been added, which do provide for the balcony elements on the upper levels. This is a view Rob had shown. I'm going to show some more details on this as well. This is the view from the motor court with the previous design. And then this transitions into the the proposed design tonight, again, showing the change to the solar canopies, the change in the slightly in the color and the removal of the vertical solar panels. And that's a close-up view of this and then transition to the new view. This also helps to show the two different roof styles. It's a little hard to see the mansard back there, but I think this is a nice picture, and this is a great corners detail at the corner of this building, provides a horizontal element and a shadow element at that level. A closer up view of the window element, I'm going to go some more detail on this in a minute, but this is, these windows are all openable windows, approximately nine feet wide, seven and a half feet high, and they all have a Juliet balcony and a railing detail in front of them. That's for the units that don't have a balcony feature itself. So in the tower elements here, those are actual balcony spaces. And as I said, some of the units on the top, they're adjacent to the mansard roofs, it'll have balcony spaces there as well. Again, this helps to show the solar panel colors, a little hard to see over here, but those are the black and the blue colors. And then we removed again the vertical solar panels from this facade of the building, and those areas have been replaced with these window elements, and these have actually been enlarged from the windows that were shown on this facade previously. There were a few windows shown here in addition to the panels. Then here's another side-by-side comparison, so it's easy to see these changes that were were provided. Move on here. This is the view from the Oceanside Boulevard frontage, and we didn't really make any changes here. Is this, we feel this end of the building does provide a significant amount of horizontal articulation and vertical articulation with the hallway and elevator balconies that are shown and the varying materials between the shingle siding and the vertical board and batten siding elements over here. So that portion of the building will remain as is in this design. We submitted a revised color materials board that was part of the packet you would have received, which has a wider, much wider variety of building materials and colors that work in concert to achieve the look here. And again, the prominent materials of the vertical board and batten siding, the shingle sided, hardy shingle siding, and then standing seam metal for the mansard roofs, which I think are significant improvements to the materials that were proposed previously. This is a detail, the openable window section, it was in your packet, and it kind of has a couple simple renderings that show the view from the exterior of the building here and what this would look like up close, and from the interior of the building this way. Again, the standard kind of California openable glass wall, able to open all nine feet or open a portion of the area. You know, we talked about this a little bit last time, and we think this will provide a significant amenity for the units. And another reminder, the units are all air-conditioned. If there's a concern about, you know, cooling and comfort, they all have air conditioning in them. But hopefully, in this location, you may not need to use it much for this kind of a window feature. Again, this is the section for the railing that's about three inches off the edge of the facade of the building. Rob had shown the roof detail, but I wanted to show it again quickly. This is the original roof. We talked about the amenity space there before. We did increase the amenity area on the roof in this slide by almost 3,000 square feet. It was previously 6,000 square feet. It's now 8875 square feet. There's additional seating areas and additional cooking areas in this area, which provides a much expanded amenity. This roof view also helps you to see the mansard roofs, the reverse slope roofs and the parapet lines. Again, the rooftop solar panels have been shifted a little bit with the effort to maintain as many solar panels on the roof as possible. Again, this is a before and after view showing the original plan and the revised plan tonight that helps you really see the area that's been expanded for the rooftop. I want to show this slide again. This is from our previous presentation, but I think it's a simple but important slide showing the areas of the site that are left for landscape and open space. That's over almost 52% of the site area is going to be in landscaping and maintained habitat and open space areas. The other drawing at the bottom here shows the footprint of the building, which is only about 25.7% of the site. It was previously 32% with the Townhome Project. And this is an exhibit Rob had shown you, but I think we didn't have this last time. I think it really helps to show the site in context with the additional landscape and the landscape design around the building and to show the neighboring areas in more detail on the edges of the building. I'll go through fairly quickly, but the the details of where we're adding trees, you know, as we talked about last time. We're adding over 11, I guess we're adding 11 trees to this plan, but there's over 50 new trees that are going to be planted on this site, which will all be 24-inch box trees. We talked about that a little bit last time. The trees along the slope area, along the streets, and any of the focal trees are all going to be designated as a minimum of 24-inch box in size at time of planting. And we've increased the tree canopy by adding these trees by almost 7%. The 28% of the site is noted in tree canopy area, which is approximately, I have a number here, you know, 32,000 square feet side area. And that's 28%. The staff for the city requirement zoning code is 12% tree canopy for a site this size. This is just a blow up of some of the areas we did add landscaping. We had two trees along the entry drive here, and that's just a blow up of that area. This is the southeast edge of the building right here. Again, we added four trees in here where we could, because there already had a significant amount of trees there, but I think adding the additional trees does make a nice improvement. We do have the habitat areas here that we're maintaining. That's the area shown that won't be developed. Excuse me. And then we also added five trees along the emergency access entry here where these weren't planned before. These are larger 24-inch box trees. This will help to screen that edge of the building as well. In addition, there's smaller trees and exit plantings along all these edges that will fill in with the other trees. So this is the detail along Oceanside Boulevard, where we did move the sidewalk closer to the building. We flipped it with the parkway area. The parkway's now along the curb, it's curb-adjacent, and the six trees that were originally shown out here are now adjacent to the street. This will provide a more prominent pedestrian environment along the edge of the building here, and I think this design does work out a little better. Just a couple slides from our previous presentation. I know you're aware of these things, but it's 146 apartments, and we just think that breakdown provides a variety of sizes with one, two, and three-bedroom units throughout this project, you know, to provide for different households. Rob had outlined the parking, but again, reiterate, under density bonus, this type of project with its proximity to the Sprinter is only required to have 73 spaces. We have 259 spaces on-site in the garage and 30 spaces designated for guests in the garage and on some of the surface parking area. There's also delivery areas, service areas noted in the motor court area to allow for that to happen on-site and not adjacent to the site or off-site. Again, this project has a significant amount of amenities for for all the units, not just the market rate, for the market rate and affordable units. And we did add the glass doors in all units, whether they have a balcony or Juliet balcony. There's meeting spaces on-site, there's rooms for arts and crafts, there's private storage in the garage, there's bicycle parking for 146 bikes, and a repair space in the garage, which will help to support transportation alternatives. We did increase the roof deck size, as I outlined, by almost 3,000 square feet. Rob had shown this slide, just showing it again, showing the orientation of our location and the unique shape of the site. And I'd showed you this at the at the last hearing, but I wanted to show it again, showing our project site in yellow, just the varying land uses that exist along the Oceanside Boulevard corridor and close proximity to our site. The commercial areas along Coast Highway, the commercial areas along Oceanside Boulevard, the 99-room Fairfield Hotel just to the north across Oceanside Boulevard will be constructed, and the commercial areas that are at the intersection of Coast Highway and Oceanside Boulevard. This is from the city's Sustainable Corridors Plan that we talked about in more detail last time. Again, we're on the Oceanside Boulevard corridor. We're located within the corridor. I think that was fairly well-understood. We talked about last time, but we're within a half mile of the Sprinter station. We are an infill site within the corridor where they designated more density to be provided as we're responding to. Also, this slide shows our pedestrian pathway from the project site to the Sprinter station. A reminder, we are going to improve the sidewalk along the east side of Dipmar. It's just a public benefit and an improvement to the site that improves the pedestrian path to the Sprinter station. We'll also be improving sidewalks along the Nevada Street cul-de-sac, which will help to provide the connection out to Oceanside Boulevard. So some of the important points that we met in implementing the Sustainable Corridors Plan were that we are an infill development opportunity site located near a transit hub. We are providing affordable housing as part of the project, not just paying the envelope fee. It makes us a density bonus project. Again, as I just mentioned, completion of the sidewalk networks along Dipmar, along Nevada Street. And as I'd shown before, on the Oceanside Boulevard frontage, we are providing pedestrian-oriented streetscapes along that edge and also along South Nevada Street. And in summary, I'd shown you some of these last time, but we did make significant revisions to building design, the exterior amenity space, to the balcony and window design, and the landscaping for the project. Project complies with the city general plan and the zoning ordinances under state density bonus law and with the local coastal program. This is an infill development located in urbanized area within a half mile of a major transit stop and within the smart and sustainable corridor, the Oceanside Boulevard corridor. Project provides badly needed housing for the city with a range of apartment sizes, including the 15 that are reserved for very low-income households. We maintain over 50% of the site as landscaped or open space area. We complete the sidewalk networks, as I'd mentioned just a minute ago, and the project improves the streetscape along public rights of way. It exceeds the parking standards for a density bonus project, and it also provides solar generation and creative ways on the project, even though we've kind of amended that plan, still going to provide that. And we would ask you to concur with staff's continued recommendation for approval of the project tonight as we discuss it. We are aware of the safer had submitted a letter to you as well, as they've submitted at the last couple of hearings, commenting on our environmental review, and our environmental experts have looked at that letter, and we believe their comments are unsubstantiated, and we can continue to address that. But I'm here, our members of our team are here, we're happy to answer any questions for you this evening. Thank you for your time tonight.
Do you have any questions for Dan before we let him take his seat?
I do want to commend you on the improvements that you've made. I see that you've definitely put in the work, and you've you've heard the community and some of their complaints. I like the the architecture changes are a lot much, they're much better. But I do still have a question for you. I brought up the in the last meeting, my concern about the the traffic. We're talking about 146 units at minimum, potentially, we say one car per unit. That's an additional 146 cars that are coming out of there minimum. How are we handling that flow? We still just have that one light. I didn't hear anything mentioned about any potential changes or relief of that of that little, that level of traffic.
Right, well, thank you for the question, Commissioner Dodds. The, you know, we did a detailed traffic analysis for the project, and that was reviewed by staff. Traffic will be circulated out through Dipmar, it's not going down Nevada Street. The light at Dipmar and Oceanside is capable of handling the traffic flow, the peak flow from the project. We don't show any impacts to the area of streets that require improvements to be made beyond that. Traffic will generally go out to Oceanside Boulevard and go east and west on Oceanside Boulevard. The capacity of the light in the intersection is well within the range of handling that traffic. Our traffic engineer worked with city staff and city traffic staff on that. So no further improvements related to that were required. We're talking about lane light. lane widening or adding other signals and that sort of thing, just doesn't meet the warrants for that.
I respect your response, and I understand that it does meet minimum requirements. But 146 units is a lot of cars that are being introduced into an area that is not used to that. That is going to be a significant change. And understanding that it does meet minimum requirements, my greater concern, my great concern is that adjacent from this building is there's an elementary school. And with this significant change, and granted, yes, it does meet minimum requirements, this really concerns me. I apologize for being compassionate about this, but we're talking about little kids who don't really pay attention to rules and to traffic and to all of that. If that light changes to green, and we've got the cars who've been waiting 10 minutes, 15 minutes trying to get through there because they've been backed up on the light, and they're trying to make that yellow, it turns red right in the time where they're meeting, they're getting through the intersection, and the kid sees green, all he thinks about is getting to the other side to get to his friends. Like I said, I do understand it does meet minimum requirements, but this is a great concern for me.
Yeah, and I can understand that. I have two small boys that are in school, and they go to a school, one's in a charter school that's off Emerald, and there's a lot of traffic there. I'm on the school board for that school, and we talk about that all the time. That's controlled of the traffic light. It's controlled with staff from the school as Dipmar is right now. It's used in a minimal capacity. I think if it were ever expanded to a more traditional school capacity, again, that would be handled with school staff, also with school zones, potentially along Oceanside Boulevard. I know it's a significant concern. I've talked to a lot of people in different situations about that at our different schools. You know, it's kind of a pact between understanding there's kids there, but, you know, one problem is one too many, right? However, the traffic light is established there, and the schools regulate that very closely when children are released in the area, and they're on the other side of Oceanside Boulevard typically. And if they're crossing the street from here, kids in here, they'd be crossing at the light, and there likely be school staff that would be assisting with that. That's how it's done in many places.
Okay. Well, we stand on different sides on that, but I understand. I do have another question. The elevator towers is on the very west side of the building?
We showed on the southeast-facing side, the side of the trees right there.
So there's a long corridor for, so for the people who live there, they'll be getting off and having to, if their apartment is on the far end, is it just one long corridor walk?
There's two elevator stacks down, and one at each end.
Can you show me how this works? Because maybe I'm missing it.
Well, this plan kind of helps show that right there, and I could zoom in. This corner of the building right here is three elevators in this stack. This is above the lobby area at this end of the building. The other end of the building, approximately right here, there's two more elevators in this stack. So those two elevator stacks serve the building. If you parked in the garage down below here, you'd go to the elevator that's closest to where you're parking, most likely, and go up to your unit.
Okay. No, thank you.
Okay.
I have a few comments. Well, mainly, you've answered the traffic, but I'm also very concerned about the traffic in spite of it meeting regulations. And also on Godfrey, that Coast Highway is, has a lot of bad traffic, especially during the summer and on weekends. So that's not where the school is, but it will be a big hazard, I think, to coming in and out of that area. So that's a comment. And then my question is, which I imagine you've addressed, how would it be, would you avoid people who lease these apartments from subleasing them as short-term rentals?
There's, I don't know if Sergio was reaching out to answer, but there's a condition in the, condition of approval that do not allow density bonus projects to have short-term rentals in them.
Okay.
And I think staff's working on an ordinance change to that as well.
Yeah, Commissioner Custer, so recently, this body considered updates to the city's local density bonus provisions. One of the local provisions we have in that updated ordinance is a prohibition against any short-term rentals for any project utilizing density bonus. So it would be a code enforcement issue in that case if it was found that someone was subleasing a unit to, for the purpose of short-term rental. It's not permissible by our own local ordinance, in addition to the condition that Dan just mentioned.
Okay.
Dan, can you put up the slide that shows the, because of the bonus, the relaxed development standards that we're looking at? That's question one. And then twice in your presentation, you talked about a hotel. Now, you know, the traffic has been kind of backed up because of what the city's doing. I guess that's a pump station or?
A pump station over there.
Yeah. But there's the property that used to be the Fresh and Easy, and that's another, that's another use now. Then there's a pump station. Is there a hotel going north of that?
Yeah, it's directly north inland of the pump station, I guess just above it.
Now, that's, and you said that's a 99-unit or 99-key property?
It'd be this edge here, if you see my highlighter on yours, this piece as it goes back that way.
So in our traffic studies, has that been, is that factored in in this property, or does that get factored in when it comes up?
No, that was factored in. That was one of our cumulative projects that was looked at. And traffic staff looked at the improvements that were being required for that hotel along Oceanside Boulevard as well.
So that's been factored in with your project?
Yeah. Now, I'm sorry, what slide did you want to go back to?
Well, the relaxed development standards.
Did staff have that slide?
Can you just tell, can we go through them? Can you go through them?
Yeah.
What was, was there a height?
It was a building height.
So what was it without the bonus and with the bonus? What is it? It's 78 now.
Yeah, the existing building height is, well, with a density bonus project in the code, you could go to 45 feet approximately. Now, Sergio's pulling up, so I don't skip on some of the details. And the building's proposed at 73 and a half feet.
So 45 or 70?
Yeah, for the additional floors. That standard covers a four-story building. It's written in the city zoning code, but the state density bonus law goes above the city zoning code on that.
Okay.
There's some waivers to some very specific setback requirements along the Oceanside Boulevard frontage and along the Nevada Street frontage, where through the shape of the cul-de-sac, shape of the building, we're kind of poking into a couple of those setback areas. It's considered side setbacks for the project. There's a small waiver for landscape along the entry at South Dipmar Street. We talked about that a little bit last time, where you're required to have at least 60% of your frontage is landscaping, and we have, is it 14%, Sergio? You have, I'm sorry, I'm looking over because I thought you had the table. But that's at the entry there. That's not really a typical front, but that's the front of the project because it's the shortest street frontage that we have on the site. So that staff considered that the front of the project, so there's a waiver for that. And then there's waivers to the city's hillside standards for the project, since we're at the top of a plateau, the slope, but that's to maintain the habitat areas and maintain the pad that we have, and some of the edges that we have on the, with the building and with the retaining walls that we have for the building pad.
Okay.
I think I covered all of them, but, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got one. How close are you to the house that's right there to the north, like from roof to wall?
The roof, it's probably five feet from the edge of that, from the edge of their corner back to the property line, and then to the building wall itself as it rises up. That's probably 10 to 12 feet.
Okay. So that would be quite an intrusion. So, okay, yeah, that's tough.
But that's one of the waivers you're entitled to, right?
Well, we don't, we were meeting the setback along that edge of the property.
So whether it's a density bonus or not, you're entitled to that setback that you're taking anyway?
Right. It's one of the factors you look at in the layout of the site, but with the density bonus, we don't really have a setback waiver for that edge.
Right. So whether this was a density bonus project or whether it wasn't, you could still be building exactly where you're building.
You could.
Relative to that house.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. So that's not an issue for?
You're setting up a scaffold to do your vertical work. I mean, how's that going to work next to that building?
Well, that, the building's setback from that property line, so we won't be on that side of the site. The foundation edge of the building along that frontage provides a kind of a podium space. So you'd be on top of that, I think, when you're working on the upper floors, upper part of the building.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So now it's time for the public to make any comment. Do we have any speakers?
Yes, Vice Chair Morrissey, we have six. Would you like me to proceed?
Please.
All right. Please come forward in the order I call your name. You will have three minutes to speak. The first speaker will be Adam Frankel, followed by Joan Bachman, followed by Kevin Bachman.
Vice Chair Morrissey, as a matter of procedure, you may want to iterate that you're opening the public hearing so that we could receive testimony from the public.
Sure, if that wasn't clear. Yeah, we're open, it's now time for the public hearing, so.
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name's Adam Frankel. I'm an attorney from the law firm Lozo Jury LLP. I'm here again on behalf of Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility, or SAFER. SAFER respectfully requests that you uphold your recent decision to deny the addendum for the Breeze Luxury Apartments project. In particular, SAFER requests that you find that the addendum is improper under CEQA and that an environmental impact report, or EIR, is required. At the August 22, 2022 hearing, SAFER, as well as multiple impacted residents and local community groups, raised serious concerns about the project's inadequate environmental review and its likely impacts to the environment. Commissioners also raised then and again today important concerns about the project's traffic and aesthetic impacts. To be clear, despite the revisions presented today, the applicant has made no revisions whatsoever to address any of the significant environmental impacts discussed at the previous hearing and raised again and supported by substantial evidence again today in SAFER's comments. Meanwhile, these experts found that the project will likely produce significant and unmitigated impacts to biological resources, indoor air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, local and regional air quality, and local noise receptors, including the surrounding homes. That's one point I wanted to address specifically that was discussed by the noise expert we retained, that there's literally no analysis of the noise impacts to the surrounding residences of the amenity space, which has now, as you know, been significantly expanded, and those impacts have not apparently been analyzed either. Let's see here. The applicant has provided no justification for its failure to address or mitigate these significant environmental impacts. There have been quite a few references to the density bonus law, but the density bonus law does not allow the project to be exempt from the requirements of CEQA. One of the arguments raised at the previous hearing was that the time for CEQA review had passed. That's actually incorrect. I don't have time to get into the legalities, but it's detailed in our letter. And the courts have repeatedly held that an addendum to a previously adopted mitigated negative declaration, which is the document that's before you today, is in fact subject to the same fair argument standard as the original mitigated negative declaration. Again, just to reiterate, the comments which SAFER presents to you today do in fact constitute substantial evidence of a fair argument that the project will have significant environmental effects. As such, we ask the commission to deny the addendum and direct staff to prepare an EIR. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. Joan Bachman, I live in the neighborhood directly south or north of this site. We also, my husband and I, own the fourplex that is catty-cornered and will be plunged into eternal darkness in the morning, never to see the morning sun again. But we are not against height or density. As I stated, we are for the coast, the Smart and Sustainable Corridors Plan. We think that's brilliant, and our neighborhood is not expected to change zoning as a result of that. So we are very much for that. But the way this was brought back really doesn't make sense to me and needs further review. This process is really unacceptable. I agree with Commissioner Simons, very confusing. And I think my son would call it shenanigans. It really is not generating any trust in our processes. So I want to talk about a couple of issues. The issue of streetscape was addressed. We thank the applicant for that. But it must stay with this parcel regardless of the project. I don't care if someone, this doesn't get built, and somebody comes back with a single-family home, fix that sidewalk. And that needs to stay with this parcel regardless of project. I want to comment that the safety issues were not addressed. If you're coming home, say after this hearing, late at night, and you go into that cavernous parking area and have to go up that elevator and then walk past all those doors, I want to give you a sense of what this building is like. It was a little difficult to find the exact dimensions, but, so this building is, let's say, that tall and that wide. Okay, that's a, that's a pretty tall and skinny building, but that's not it. The building is actually more like this. Sorry, I didn't put this box, but it's more like this. Look at this thing. This is not a building. It's a railcar. So you're going to walk down this corridor. This is a ridiculous corridor. Some mom who has a bunch of kids, has to work late at night, has to come home carrying groceries, going down that. So as you see from what I gave you, please break this into at least two buildings. They are proposing five elevator stair combo or elevators. Make it four. Break this building into two. Let's get some real architecture. I understand they made a pretty picture, but it's just surface treatment. This is not actual architecture, and they really need to work at it. I showed the applicant pictures of modular buildings in London that are really striking and beautiful, made with modular items, but we're not getting that. We're getting a bunch of junk thrown on the top. And fundamentally, this would not even be proposed in any city to the south. So this is nothing more than a cynical attempt to see how far they can push the rules. So we certainly do not want to see this thing get built. I'm thinking it's just a cynical attempt, and they're not going to build it. There is nothing to be proud of here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Breeze Luxury, is that an oxymoron? It has neither. I feel like we are being duped into believing that this is something that it's not. This project has come back only with enhanced window dressing. Windows and dressing. Fundamental architecture is unchanged. I think, as was pointed out earlier, it's just a long, thin box. Three things, safety. It's 400 feet long. That's longer than a football field. If you come off one side because parking is in one area, you have to park on the other elevator. That's 400 feet you got to walk past everyone's home. So from a safety standpoint, long hallways, the elevator access on the ends, and then windows. I understand that the nine-foot openings, I hate to see a toddler climb over that when someone has to open this window to get some circulation. Livability, fundamental air circulation for both sides of this building. The breeze comes on one side of the building from the ocean this way. Yes, the breeze will go the other way, but only during Santa Ana's, which happens once or twice a year. Livability for, breathability for the air circulation. And then the facelift, I think we talked about, just its window dressing. So fundamentally, recommend denial of this with recommendation to come back with better architecture for safety and livability. Again, this project would not be approved in cities like Carlsbad, Lucadia, Slana Beach, and others. Oceanside deserves Oceanside deserves better. Thank you.
Now if we can have our last three speakers, if you'll please come in the order I call your name, and you'll have three minutes. We've got Diane Nygaard, Angie Matthews, and Maggie Matthews. Thank you.
Good evening, Acting Chair and Commissioners. Diane Nygaard, representing Preserve Calavera. And I meant to get here a lot earlier tonight and do general public comments about housing in Rena, but I got stuck in traffic. But there is a handout with three very important questions at the bottom that really should be asked about every housing project. So hopefully, ask them about this one. We certainly appreciate that this is a smart growth project along a transportation corridor, but it still needs to be done right. We appreciate that they've made changes that make it a better fit with community and that they were willing to meet with us and hear our concerns. But we still have concerns, and we ask you to address them tonight. We sent written comments earlier today that we hope you've had a chance to review. I just want to highlight two of them. First, the project is going to generate a whole lot more greenhouse gases than were planned for in our cap. If the developer doesn't mitigate them, who does? We all, we all will have to pay the price to mitigate those because we have to still comply with state law. They've just met the minimum requirements with solar panels, 50% of the building energy demand. But that does not consider that this building is going to last a whole lot more than 30 years. They removed all of the vertical solar panels, and these small awnings would be much harder to maintain in a typical array of rooftop panels. They also just met the minimum requirements for EV parking and charging stations. We ask you to ask them to do more. Provide more EV charging. Update the computations for energy from the solar panels. Add a requirement for annual review and reporting to make sure they're still meeting that 50% energy requirement every near, not just on one day. This huge project will generate a whole lot of traffic. It includes way more parking than city standards require for a smart growth site like this. Yet it still has not addressed the very real traffic safety concerns like crossing of the street, conflicts between bike and car movements, and the potential for residents to park on the street exacerbating neighborhood parking. Our recommendation, require a TDM program. This is a simple way to address traffic and better support alternative transportation. A precedent was set for doing a TDM with the Mission Cove project. This is an easy way for the developer to demonstrate he takes these concerns seriously, and it still gives him full flexibility to achieve this in a way that works for them. We hope this developer cares enough about our community to make the few common sense changes that we have asked for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I go? Okay. I didn't see the light. Hello, my name is Ange Matthews. I live very close to the side on Schaefer Street. And I just want to explain what it's like and happening in our neighborhood because I don't know if you guys live there. I don't think you do. Because we have this, lots of stuff going on. It's not just this, okay? This is just one of many different things happening in our neighborhood. The school issue with Dittmar. Just today, I mean, I'm traveling constantly because I live in that area. And there's the slow signs, and I'm seeing just they have to have a police officer right there because people violate that. Why do we even have to have slow signs now? Can you imagine once there's actually all this development going on? That they have to literally every day pull out the slow signs when it's too fast now? So that's number one, a big issue. Number two, when we moved in, the first day we moved in, there was an accident right at Dittmar and Oceanside. Within a couple of weeks, there was another accident, and then another one. So I don't know about these traffic studies. I mean, I see them out there, but they're out there at 11 o'clock. I'd like to see them out there when there's actually traffic. I would love someone to actually live where we live and try to go to Fraser Farms. Just try to go at like 4 o'clock, 4:30. Try to get out of Fraser Farms, try to get into Fraser Farms, try to get back home. It's very difficult. Now imagine there's going to be this horrible hotel, which we fought against and lost. And it's called the Horrible Hotel, by the way, because it's going to be horrible. So we got that. We got this developer who, how dare they give us that first version even? Without any trees or anything? We are Oceanside. It's Oceanside Boulevard. That is our namesake. And it's going to look like, what? Where are we? Where are we when we're driving up? Are we in Oceanside anymore? Please care about our neighborhood. I know it's exciting by the beach. I know everybody wants to be there. But we live there. We are there every day trying to get to Fraser Farms and get some groceries for our kids, for our wives, for our daughters. But thank you. Please remember this. There's people that, we just want to live there. We don't, I want to be able to ride my bike and not get hit by a car. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Maggie Matthews, District One resident, pretty close to this Breeze initiative, which I find to be just terrible, especially when you consider it's hand in glove with the Fairfield Hotel, a four-story, 99-room boutique hotel right across from the Breeze. When they finished, when we got as far as we did with Fairfield Hotel, egress into and out of the hotel hadn't even yet been finalized. There was talk about putting up a stoplight right there halfway up the hill so that safety could be maintained. I found it egregious that in the Breeze summary, traffic wasn't mentioned. How is that possible? We don't know what a crazy street that is. How is it that safety is not even mentioned in their summary? I also find it curious that there was a full rendering of the entirety of the project as you're south looking north, but there was no such rendering if you were northbound looking south at the entirety of the facade. Now, why would that be? I can tell you because it's freaking hideous. No, but seriously, how is it that the project is this far along and we, the public, can't even see what that rendering looks like? You get that short version as you're coming up Oceanside Boulevard? And I think the reason that so many of the images used to show the project are bird's eye so that you can't see the grand scale of the six or seven stories of this monstrosity. Please deny the project.
Thank you.
That concludes our speakers.
Okay. Would the applicant like to come up and address any of the things that were discussed by the public?
Members of the Planning Commission, my name is Brian Fish. I am the attorney for the applicant with the law firm of Buckalter. Thank you for the time this evening. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. Don't want to cover too much here. The CEQA issues raised by SAFER have all been addressed in the record that exists already. The comments that they submitted today are just a repeat of what they've done before or other things that this committee has seen previously. If you recall, on the Ocean Camp project that you saw recently, they raised these very same issues about air quality and noise impacts and all that kind of stuff. When you look at the actual documentation, it shows that there's not a justification for what they're doing. They're doing general statements instead of the specific analysis that staff and the applicant worked together on and presented to you. So just want to make that clear that on a CEQA side of things, you have all the information you need in order to adopt the addendum as it exists. I know staff has looked at this issue of the approval versus denial very carefully, lots of discussions, and that's how it came back to you today because of the bylaws that exist in the city's regulations and those type of things of how the action went last time. And that's how come we're here today with both of those resolutions. So we're happy to answer any questions that the commissioners have or if there's anything that caused you pause in what was presented. Again, happy to do what we can to get you to the right decision.
Thank you. Dan?
Dan Niebaum again, the applicant. Yes, this is a difficult project. I think we all know that. It's a challenging project. Density bonus projects and several that we brought forward in here are all challenging. There's lots of competing interests on them, as you've heard about and as we've all talked about. The overriding need, though, is the need for housing in Oceanside. And the ability to implement density bonus law in the state has come forward on many projects, but the goal is to provide additional housing market rate and affordable housing. You know, the density bonus law, at the end of it, says "The law shall be interpreted liberally to produce the maximum amount of housing possible." Sergio has mentioned that in several presentations we've had. And I don't want to hit people over the head with the density bonus law. I just, we realize there's lots of competing interests. Tried to design a project that could meet those interests but also meet the needs for housing on this site with the density that the site permitted under the law. And, you know, again, strong good faith effort to make these amendments. The technical issues in the project have been reviewed thoroughly by staff and been presented in the addendum. So again, we'd ask you to consider it tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, Jeff.
I do have one additional question for the proponent was, in this hearing today, different than what we had heard previously, there was discussion about the hotel that's going in across the street. So with that said, when you did your traffic studies and you did your addendum to this, did you consider the combined effects of the hotel and this development simultaneously? And did you address them in the addendum? And if so, this is your opportunity to discuss that publicly.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Simons. Yeah, as I mentioned, the hotel and a number of other cumulative uses were looked at in the traffic study. That was approved several years ago. But that was analyzed as part of our traffic added to the area, to the area traffic as cumulative traffic, as any of the impacts that we might have on existing intersections. Traffic engineers worked with traffic staff. They identify intersections where there's more than 50 trips, and you take the traffic study out through those intersections. So it goes down to the freeway, goes out to Oceanside or out to Coast Highway and several other intersections. Most of the traffic, of course, goes along Oceanside Boulevard. So that was analyzed, part of the addendum. There is more traffic, absolutely. It's a larger project than the 34, you know, townhome project. But it doesn't produce impacts that require improvements to be made.
So in the addendum, you addressed the combined effects of the hotel and your project. The city reviewed that, and their review of your MND and your addendum, and the city concurred with it as a lead agency, and here it sits in front of us. So from a process standpoint, that's accurate?
Commissioner Simons, that would be accurate.
Okay, so it was considered?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You made the statement that the transition from the 34 units to 146 units, that there wouldn't be a significant impact. How do we make that determination? Because we have, even if there isn't one car per unit, let's say there's 75% of the units have vehicles. This is a commuter state. I know that we do have transit, public transit that's available, but the majority of the people are going to drive. So how did we get to, where did we get to that analysis that there wouldn't be a significant impact?
Well, the analysis, again, is done as a local traffic study. It was done for the site by a professional traffic engineer. LOS Engineering did the traffic study for this. And again, working with the standards, requirements of the city, they did the analysis based on the new traffic that would be produced by the project, looking at the distribution of the traffic in the area, the intersections, queuing, street intersections and street segments, and what the impacts on those might be. And what that tells us, yes, there's lots of traffic. I live in Oceanside. I live near the 78 in College. There's lots of traffic there. But the streets can still handle that traffic, and the intersections can still handle the increase in the traffic. The street segments can handle the increase when there's no impact shown. And that's what the studies are showing. The studies are done at peak hours, a show in the morning and nighttime, which are basically tied with rush hour time. And those peaks are what are required to be analyzed as well and then throughout the day over a daily period for your average daily traffic. And the peaks show no impacts as well. And I'm not a traffic engineer. I've seen enough of them. I'm kind of putting it in layman's terms, but that's how that's looked at. And so city traffic staff looked at that report thoroughly as we went through the review process and, you know, concurred with the findings that are in the traffic study. And then those, of course, are carried through to the addendum that show that there's no further impact from this project.
Thank you. So Sergio, there's a lot of questions about traffic. Who's our traffic, who's the city's traffic engineer? And it'd be nice if they were here and they could speak, but I guess they're not.
You're correct, Vice Chairman Morrissey. We do have a city traffic engineer. Her name is Tila Cotter. She isn't present tonight. Traffic didn't seem to be a big issue with this project with the previous review of it. Maybe a point of clarification on whether there's not going to be impacts. Because when the project is implemented and all the other cumulative projects are implemented, doesn't mean there's not going to be change to the traffic patterns. What, when we use the term, there's no going to be impact, there's not... So what a traffic, a local traffic study does, it assesses level of service and whether or not the projects, when you introduce them, do they change the level of service to a standard that's not acceptable as outlined in our city's circulation element that's part of the general plan. Doesn't mean there's not going to be change with the traffic and change in traffic patterns. When we use the term, there's no impacts, that means that there's no impacts that would reduce that level of service to a level that's failing. So doesn't mean that there's not going to be change. What there means is that it's been analyzed with the cumulative projects included as part of that analysis. And what that study found was that there's no significant impact, and that's a CEQA term, which doesn't, CEQA doesn't utilize level of service metrics any longer. But there's no impacts with respect to the level of service. So I'm not sure if that provides a clarification or not, but that's generally how that traffic study would have been formulated.
Well, I have questions about the traffic. How many cars, how many extra trips does 130, 40, whatever this, how many units this is, do they add in for their traffic study?
Sure, Commissioner Custer. So Sandag, our regional local government, publishes a traffic generation table based on various land uses. These are apartments, I believe. And so I believe the, and I don't have it in front of me, so I have to confirm this, but I believe that trips, vehicle trips, ADT, average daily trips associated with a single apartment is either six or eight units. So just multiply the six times the eight. Is it eight?
Six.
Oh, six. So here, Rob just pulled up the traffic study for the project. It's a six trips per dwelling unit. So that would be 876 additional vehicle trips a day with, it looks like 8% occurring in the morning peak hour and 9% of those trips occurring in the evening peak hour.
So to kind of recap where we are. So last, August 22nd, the Planning Commission denied the proposal but didn't have reasons to deny it. So that's where we asked staff to come up with, I guess, this attachment to. So if it is denied, we would use this as reasons for denying the project?
Commissioner Morrissey, that is correct. And that resolution could be modified per verbal direction to add additional findings should this body find additional findings for denial of the project.
So this is a little unusual. So all I want everybody here to understand, what are all our options?
Sure.
So can you articulate that?
I'll do my best to summarize them. So staff has made a rec, let me go back to the August 22nd meeting. At the August 22nd meeting, there was a motion twice made to approve the project. Both times that motion failed. If it was the commission's intent to deny the project that evening, the correct course of action would have been to make a motion for denial, and that motion would have been acted on by the members present. Since that did not occur, we re-advertised the item for a new public hearing, which we're holding tonight. we're holding tonight. We have provided the commission with two options. One of the options is to follow staff's recommendation and approve the project by adopting resolution, I believe it's 22, 22 dash P 23. The other option available to this commission is to deny the project by adopting resolution 22 P 27. Those are the options that are available to this commission. And if you wanted to modify and articulate additional findings for purposes of denying the project, you can do that verbally, and we can write that in, read it into the record, and we'll come back with a modified resolution that reflects the additional reasons for denying the project.
All right. So let me see if I understand this correctly, what you said. What you're saying is that we didn't disapprove the project, we failed to approve the project. So to me, if I'm a member of the public sitting out here, that sounds like a procedural loophole to give the developer a second bite at the apple. So my concern is, I mean, you know what my vote was before. I didn't feel like the, I didn't feel like the people that had come up and had their complaints and their voices heard, I didn't think that they met the standard to overturn the city's review of the SEQA document, and I didn't think that they had met the threshold to say, no, your addendum isn't good enough. So that's where I stood at the time. But now I'm on the, I'm on the side of the fence that says, we should not reconsider this project. We considered it. And two of the people who voted in favor of not approving the project, which I find to be a procedural loophole, are not here. So if we now reconsider the project and the project moves forward, this body's perception in the public is tainted because that's what it's going to look like. So if we reconsider this project, my vote's not going to change. I'll say that because that's how I feel about it, right? I have to defer to the fact that the city's professionals, when they review the SEQA documentation prepared by the project proponent, you have traffic engineers, you have civil engineers, you have all the staff, and we rely on you to find that it's adequate. So aside, aside short of somebody coming up here and saying, hey, did you consider this? And we find that it wasn't considered, then we're not going to question the staff. We have to assume that the staff is competent in what they do. I mean, this is just me saying my opinion here. A challenger can challenge that in court, bring their professionals forward, and a court can decide whether that was the case. The proponent also has the opportunity to appeal this to the city council, and they can present it in front of the city council. And that's fine. But I think we considered it. And I, and I think it's a slippery slope for us, and I think it reflects poorly on this commission to reconsider it because other proponents don't have that opportunity to do that. That's my personal feeling on it. So if we, if we're going to reconsider it, I'll vote on the reconsideration. But if we're not going to reconsider and stand by the body's decision and vote on the resolution and send it to city council because it was already considered, that's a, that's a separate action.
Well, would it be appropriate just to vote on the resolution first and see how the commission feels about that? I mean, that's what you're saying. You're saying, look, we've already voted against it.
Yeah, I think we.
And why give a second bite at the apple? So I guess, you know, they're not here.
Right.
So would that be appropriate if we just voted on that?
Vice Chair Morrissey, the discretion lies with the commission.
Right.
Okay.
You have two recommendations, two options in front of you.
I mean, I would like some more discussion maybe amongst the other commissioners here with how you feel about reconsidering the project as opposed to, you know, voting on, on what it was the commissioner or Chairman Rizales sent back to the city and said, hey, give me a resolution based on our denial of the project.
Okay.
So if we vote on the resolution, the resolution is to deny the project?
Correct.
Okay. It just seems like we're going around in circles.
In my mind, that vote would be, we're not reconsidering the project. We have voted, the body voted the last time. We are looking at the resolution that Chairman Rizales asked the city to bring forward. Does that resolution accurately reflect the body's decision? That's the extent of what I would like to consider tonight.
Okay.
So wait, I still have one more clarifying statement. So if we vote, someone will make a motion to vote on the resolution. And then when we vote, if we vote yes on the resolution, it means we're denying the project.
That would be my understanding.
That would be correct.
Okay. Just so I know how to vote.
What the motion is for is a motion to deny the project by adopting resolution 22 dash P 27. And then we can vote on that.
Okay. Well, then, I want to hear, Kevin, do you have any comment?
No, please.
I think this has been cleared up. If we're voting just on the resolution, I think that's appropriate, especially with two of our commissioners missing.
Okay. Then you want?
So I think, I would like to discuss the resolution now. So if, as a body, we have kind of decided we're not going to reconsider this, now let's look at the resolution and see if it is, does it reflect what we want to move forward with, with our no vote from the last meeting? And that's where you guys reviewed the tape and you came back and you said, hey, this is what you guys said in the tape, and this is what we've put down on the paper. And there's a couple of issues that I had with that that I would like to discuss just in that resolution.
I'm still a little confused. Am I the only one that's still a little confused? Why are we even having a resolution? We denied the project. Y'all denied the project.
We denied the project, but we didn't give grounds for why we denied it because there was a lot of discussion like this. It was very confusing. So Chairman, Chairman Rizales said, hey, will you go back and review the tape and prepare a resolution for our denial that we can look at next time?
Okay. So one more question, clarifying again. We've denied other projects without having to go through this process and provide a reason. We've just denied them, correct? In the past.
City planner, can you address that?
Commissioner Custer, I don't know all the records of every vote on every project to deny it. But typically, the motion, once the motion to approve the project would have failed, there should have been a subsequent motion made to deny the project. And then we would have brought back to you a resolution that reflected the testimony here by this body, and it would have been on the consent calendar. That did not occur at the last meeting. So that's why we're here today with the two options in front of you.
So Tom didn't close it.
Okay.
And kept it open.
Okay.
So, so at this juncture then, why don't you keep, Jeff, did you want to go through the, you said you had something you wanted to address in the attachment to?
Yeah. I mean, just, just speaking to that point too, is, is there wasn't, there wasn't an understanding, especially by the members that are not present here, that there would be a reconsideration by the project. It would be that we're going to come back in this next meeting and we're just, we're going to discuss the resolution, and we're going to hash out the details of the no vote and then vote on the resolution to deny. So I think it's, I just don't think it's fair for other proponents to not get it, to get that second bite at the apple. That's just where I stand on it. I don't, I think that's where it is. Now, relative to the, the resolution P 27, this, this is where I think the project stood at the end of it, and I think it still stands there today, is there's a project proponent that comes out and says, look, we've met all the requirements. You have no reason to deny this. You can't deny any of these things that you don't like, architectural setbacks, all the other things that they're doing. And then there's a host of people that are saying, wait, you didn't meet the SEQA requirements. So I thought that there was pretty much consensus amongst, amongst the folks that were sitting up here that night, that you're right, we can't deny any of this based on the, because it's a density bonus project. So when you look at the resolution, there is the SEQA piece of it, which is for the SEQA addendum, has paragraphs one, two, three, four, five, and five is twice. So anyway, there's five and five. But then I think for the part for tentative map, for the development plan, and for the regular coastal permit, I don't think that anyone that was here disagreed that we couldn't, we couldn't deny this project based on any of that, right? The density bonus law requires us to approve those things.
Okay.
The issue, the only issue was whether this met, whether it met the threshold to deny the addendum and force you back into the SEQA cycle. So you're not denying the project, you're just denying the, the use of the addendum and forcing the proponent to go back and back into the SEQA cycle because you failed to consider, there were significant effects that you didn't consider, or that there were significant effects that you therefore cannot use the addendum. You have to go back and do SEQA. That's how I thought it was left. So I would, I would move that we would remove the reasons for denial for everything except the SEQA because that seemed to be the only issue.
So Commissioner Simons, when we act upon a project, we have to make the findings for each entitlement proposed. And those are what's reflected, that's what's reflected in the resolution before you, P 27, based on the public testimony, testimony from this commission and testimony that's part of the record at large. So the findings that you see here for SEQA were based on information received from the public. They weren't staff's recommendations, they're not staff's findings. They're staff's interpretation of the record and of the conversations and the comments that occurred here at the dais on the meeting at August 22nd. And so that's what's before you today. If you wanted to strike something from that, we'd have to ask the city attorney to, maybe we would have to ask this commission to articulate other reasons under those broader findings for each of those entitlements on why we're denying the project. The bottom line is that staff made a recommendation, and this, this is not reflective of staff's recommendation. This is reflected of the testimony and the record as a whole.
Understood. Okay. In that case, I will move that we respect, we not reconsider the project, that we respect the vote that occurred on that day, and that we adopt resolution, planning commission resolution 2022 P 27.
I'll second that. Okay. I'll second it. Shall we vote? So do you, you understand what the, what we're saying?
So for clarifications, I'll repeat the motion just to make sure it's very clear on the record because the record's important. Commissioner Simons made a motion to adopt a resolution P 22 P 27, denying the project.
Correct. Okay.
Let the record show that the motion passes unanimously.
So I think the next thing on the agenda that would be commissioner reports unless, actually, there's no discussion items I see. Sergio, when, do you, when would you make your comments about future events? Is that?
That would be under the city planners and commissioners reports. So I think the next order of business would be if there was an appeal of any city planners' determinations, and we don't have any on the agenda today. And then the next item would be whether or not there's any discussion items, and we don't have any today.
We don't have any discussion items, right? So commissioner reports then? Commissioner that's?
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Simons?
What, what falls under this category? What can you say and not say? Is this just like my time, I can say whatever I want?
More or less, I think, maybe with a little discretion and things related to planning commission business perhaps.
Yeah, yeah, right. Of course, of course. I got nothing.
I mean, like, if you see a stop sign that should, you know, if you see.
No, no, I just, I just had a general comment about these density bonus projects relative to this, you know? It is, it's a very difficult thing that we have to consider when you have the state government and the legislature takes this authority away from the planning commission and imposes it upon the city. So we have to follow those laws. We can't legislate from our seats in the planning commission here as distasteful as those, some of those projects may be. And I also think that where there's city ordinances and there's, there's city code and there's things, and people say that, you know, they come up and they say, well, we don't like these things. I think we have to defer to the professionals that, that deal with this. We can't legislate from our positions here, you know? Or we can't make ordinances and we can't be city council. It's our, it's our job to view projects through the lens of the code and the, and the things that our elected officials put into place. And that's, that's our charter, and that's my two cents. That's my report.
Well, that's kind of what I want to comment on.
Yeah.
I mean, basically, we have to follow the law. I mean, obviously, we're, I think we would all be on board with doing that most of our lives. But it seems like, I mean, y'all tell us in our reports, which we need, and thank you for telling us, what is allowed or not allowed. So why do we even need to vote? I guess my bottom line is, what is our purpose at this point? Sacramento says you got to do this. It's taken away from us as the local body. It just doesn't seem to make sense. We're just doing what Sacramento tells us today.
Well, you could always take the point that, you know, we voted the way we think the city wants, and, you know, we'll kick it up to city council and let them override us, but it's our city, and, you know, they're our representatives, and if we don't agree with them, then let somebody else decide. But, I mean, I think we've spoken today, nobody liked the project.
Right.
As, for lots of reasons. Traffic, aesthetics.
Too big, just too plain big for an Oceanside.
Yeah. People are coming in the city, going, going surfing, they're going to see that.
Right.
Beacon on a hill, looks like, well, whatever, I'm not going to say anything more than that, but yeah, it's our city.
So we should vote how we want to regardless of what Sacramento's saying.
I mean, this, this, to me, this was a little bit of an anomaly. This was a little different than, I mean, every, every project, there's going to be somebody against it that's in, you know, like, not in my backyard.
Yeah.
But, you know, we voted last week, and I, I, I thank you for, you know, keeping us on track that, that they get one bite at the apple. And, and we, you know, just because Tom and, and Louise aren't here, we, we honored that, so. And so anyway, I, I think that's good.
So one other thing is, I think that we spend a lot of time, you know, listening to the public, which of course we want to do, but I think it would be good if they understood as well the laws that are coming from Sacramento that are forcing us to do things that they don't like and we don't like. So maybe it would be good if we told them or had a little five minutes on that discussion. We're going to have to pass this project because of law A, B, C, and D, and, you know, so they might as well understand it.
Well, maybe they'll think twice about who they vote for next time.
Well, yeah, that would help them think about who they vote for. And we could do that prior to the public speaking, when they come up with their comments. So everyone would understand that we're not doing this because we want to, we're forced to. And yes, then they would consider who to vote for. What do y'all think of that idea?
I think we do do that. I think the staff does a good job of presenting the laws and the regulations and the code and everything. And certainly, when we did the project the first time, that was, went over, that was very thoroughly covered, like, yes.
All the laws were being followed.
Yes, it was.
That we have to do it this way.
The city was very thorough in that.
Well, I think y'all are very thorough. I just don't know that the public always understands. We understand. It would be nice if they understood too, because they're not reading all this that we're reading before a project comes. A lot of them actually probably are reading more that come. I can tell that.
Sergio, did you want to, do you have a report?
I do have a few items to go over if the commissioners are.
I know Diane wants to say something. It's a little out of order, but if it's, I'm fine if we could entertain her, she's got her hand up, so.
It's at the commission's discretion.
Diane, go ahead.
Can you, can you come to the dais, Diane?
Of course, the state law is very frustrating to everybody in the community too, but I can tell you what's frustrating for me here in Oceanside and for residents in every other city in this region. SB 9 allows exemptions for public health, safety, changes to the physical environment, and impact on cultural resources. And have we worked through and seen if there are ways that we can actually put those into place in our city so it gives you? you some discretion to say no based on those? I've been told by staff that they're working on them. Well, these laws now have been in place for some time, and we've seen bad project after bad project move forward. I think it's really time to make that a priority. Let's give local control back to locals and use those exemptions that allow, would allow us to do.
Thanks, Diane.
Thank you.
You bet. Sergio?
Thank you, Vice Chair Morrissey. So just a quick update on upcoming items to this body and the city council that are planning commission related. On October 10th, there is another density bonus project, mixed use development located at the Sprinter, at the Crouch Street Spinner Station. Basically, it's known as Ocean Creek. It's composed of 295 dwelling units and approximately 7,000 square feet of commercial retail space. On October 24th, there's a cannabis-related conditional use permit coming to this body known as Herb Realford Distribution Facility. And then on November 7th, there is a regular coastal permit for an addition on a single family home along South Pacific Street. This Wednesday at city council, there is a regular coastal permit for 720 South Pacific Street, small addition there. And then there's also the climate action plan progress report. And then moving out to October 5th, there is the home occupation permit, I'm sorry, the home occupation ordinance that this body considered some time ago back in March will be considered by city council, along with two appeals of the Ocean Camp project that this body considered back in July. And moving out to November 16th, the inclusionary housing ordinance is going to be considered by city council. And one more thing to note is on October 12th, the city council will hold interviews for the vacant planning commission seat that we've had since Jolene Hayes resigned her position.
October 12th?
On October 12th, yes, sir.
Okay. Is that, and we can come to that meeting, is that a public?
It's a workshop, yeah, a public workshop. It'll be right here in the council chambers.
Okay. Great. This meeting is adjourned.